All right, thank you. Welcome to the Annapolis Education Commission May Meeting. Our Chair Jess Pakler is actually at a school concert this evening, so I am your Vice Chair Laura Booth. And I'm waiting for a few more folks to come in, so I just want you to know that we are, we are here and the meeting will start shortly. We're hoping a few more, for a few more folks will join in so that we have a quorum. Rhonda Pindell Charles said she would be here as well. But I do not see, and then she also had asked us, she also had invited. Debbie Odom, Rhonda had asked us to invite Debbie Odom. She is the Ward Three Community Liaison. And I do not see that she is here. Well, this could be short and sweet, guys. All right. I think we may just go ahead. All right, I'm going to do a quick roll call, actually help me flash up the agenda for this evening, which is pretty short and sweet. All right, here is our agenda for this evening. It is fairly fairly short and sweet. I will call the meeting to order now, it is 6:14, so we are running a little bit late. And we will do a roll call, we will, if there anyone who wants to make any changes to this agenda, let us know, otherwise we will go into public testimony, which we have not received any. We had hoped to get some feedback from some of the folks in the local community and have not received any. And then we will discuss redistricting, which is the meaning, the reason for our meeting this evening. So does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Actually, I guess I should do roll call first. Let me go through roll call, see who's here. All right. Fish Stark is not here. Jamie Weaver is not here. Ward Three, Ed Skene.
I'm present.
Thank you. Ward Four, Tara.
I'm here.
Yay, welcome. Now, have you been officially sworn in?
Yes, April 8th.
Yay, okay, wonderful. Well, welcome, we are glad to have you. India is not here. Cory, oh, you know what, we don't have any, Cory's not here, take minutes. All right, Ward Seven is me, hi. I'm Laura Booth. Jess Pakler is our Chair, she's Ward Eight, she is not present this evening, but she did send her proxy. And then our at-large members are Janet.
Janet Norman here.
Thank you. Pam Bukowski, I do not see. Oh, Odessa is, I thought I saw Odessa earlier.
Yeah, so Odessa is here.
There you are, you know what, it's because I'm sharing my screen and everybody's, there's too many, everybody's scrunched off and vanished off my screen. Okay, wonderful, thank you, Odessa. Grace Matthews not here, and Elder Woman Finlayson, I do not see as well, oh, okay.
Grace, yeah, Grace is here, Grace, aren't you on? She came in earlier.
But I don't see her now.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen because I can't see, I can't see you guys. All right, hang on, how do I stop share? All right, yeah, I thought I did see her earlier, but she seems to have jumped off, or maybe she will jump back on. All right, and then yeah, she, Grace just emailed, sent an email, I don't know if it was doesn't seem to be any content to it, oh, okay. And then India also sent in a a proxy vote, so we have proxy votes from India and Jess, so we have one, two, three, four, five, that gives us seven, so that gives us the ability to to vote, yay. All right, so this was the document that was sent out, or I guess in the agenda, anybody have any objections to accepting the agenda as proposed?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as proposed.
I second.
Thank you. Any objections?
No.
Okay, motion carries, agenda is approved, all right. So the bulk of our meeting this evening was simply to pass some sort of a statement on the subject of redistricting to AACPS. Basically because of information that feels like it was either left out or just should have been considered and was not. I was hoping we would get some more feedback from some of the folks in the community that, that are most affected, which is namely Mills parole, which in, under all three scenarios proposed by the city, Mills parole will go to Annapolis Middle, but then go down to South River High School for high school. And there are a lot of concerns with that, so we had started sort of talking about them at our last, last couple of meetings, and so we were trying to sort of formulate a document with all the, all the various ideas that came up as a result of that, so that's what this document here is. So this was sent out to you last in preparation for the meeting, so I hope you've had a chance to read through it, if not, I can scroll through it real slowly on the screen so everybody can have a chance to, to look at it. But basically, just as a document saying that we, we would like to express our concern, the Annapolis Education Commission would like to express our concern for the scenarios presented for the Phase Two redistricting plan, and to sort of outline sort of bullet points to the issues that we saw coming up, that we've discussed at our last couple of meetings.
Laura, can I ask a question before we go line by line through this document? Was anyone at the NAACP meeting that attended and could provide us a summary update of some of the points that they raised there? That maybe we need to include in this document, or?
I was not able to attend. I don't know, was anyone else able to attend?
Tara, Enid, Odessa, anyone else? Able to go to that meeting on the, on the 5th of May?
No.
Great.
Grace?
I thought that they were gonna go over each one, but then they kind of like skipped around a little bit, so. But I do have a question. The NAACP.
Okay, did you go to the meeting, Odessa?
Yeah, I was there at the meeting. But they started out, they started out on information that to me wasn't necessary. They started out talking about proficiency and reading and all this kind of stuff. And then some parents spoke up and was saying how they've been through this process before. And I have too, because when I first moved back to Annapolis over twenty some years ago, the kids in Bobwater were going to South River. Then they changed it up again, and then they changed it up again. So, on that note, it's, it's, it's just not clear, and then I want to ask the question, the lady that came to our last meeting from Edgewater. Did she say that some of the kids from Edgewater will be going to Mills parole?
Yes. Yes, the kids in the, the kids that in the oh, what's the community?
Gingerville?
Gingerville, thank you, yes, currently get bused down to Edgewater, but they're going, moved up to Mills parole for elementary school to Annapolis Middle, and then back down to South River for high school.
But we've been, you know, we've been through this, you know, before, I mean, and, and they were trying to do that once before, have Gingerville to go to Mills parole, but didn't pass, so they've always gone back down to Edgewater. I don't think Gingerville has ever gone to Mills parole.
Well, they, because they've always been against it. Also, Odessa, in that meeting, I know that Jan, Jess went to the meeting, and I tried to talk to Keanu. We've just been missing each other, or he'll call me, but he was going to give me a little bit of information. But we just have not, when he calls me, I can't talk, when I call him, he can't talk, but I wanted to know, Odessa, if any of the parents spoke out.
You, the parents, oh, you weren't at the meeting? I thought it sounded like.
No, I had choir rehearsal on Tuesdays.
Yeah, okay, well, that's what happened. Instead of the NAACP explaining all three scenarios, I mean, you know, the parents started speaking out. Yeah, and they, and the parents were the ones that were more, I mean, they were really vocal, saying that they've gone through this rodeo before. And, you know, and that, you know, and they felt that, that the whole redistricting thing just didn't make sense, because most of the parents spoke out and say that their kids didn't feel comfortable down in South River.
Okay.
So pretty much, that's what the parents were saying.
Okay, that's good information to know. Yeah, what, how they're, how the affected people are feeling. Whether or not they've gone through it before doesn't affect the the current situation. And just because it's been attempted or not attempted before, you know, doesn't change what AACPS is going to proceed with now. But if the parents, you know, are not if they have reasons why they do not believe this is beneficial for their students' academic and emotional development, it sounds like that they are concerned about the, the climate of acceptance at the receiving school.
But it, but I, I just couldn't quite understand why they would transfer kids from Mills parole to are they going to transfer kids from Mills parole to Edgewater?
No, other way around, they'll bring the kids that are, that currently, the kids in Gingerville who currently goes to Edgewater would instead go to Mills parole.
But isn't Mills parole already overcrowded?
Well, that's one of the points, they say that according to their documents, it's currently at seventy-nine percent capacity, which I, I sound slow to me, I know when we visited there, now, to be fair, it was pre-COVID, but that building was pretty full at the time, as I recall, but they're saying it's currently at a seventy-nine percent capacity. So the, the issue though is, is that that is seventy-nine percent of state-rated capacity. State-rated capacity means maximum class size in every classroom. But Mills parole, the first point on, in this document is that Mills parole is a Title One school, and when we went through redistricting the, for the last round, one of the, the first things that we were told was that the Title One schools try to keep smaller class sizes, typically those class sizes are about eighty percent of what the state-rated capacity would be, which means that right now, the Mills parole building is at, if, if it's at seventy-nine percent capacity now, that, that most of those classes are at one hundred percent Title One class size. So if you increase the, you know, the number of students that attend the school, then you are looking at class sizes that exceed the, the numbers that, that the school system uses for Title One, and I, at one point.
Laura, do we have any documentation of a report or something? Where they've said they aim for an eighty percent?
No, what I, what I was able to find, and this is just digging around in my own old documents, I went through the notes that I had from the last redistricting, and let me see if I can find them, they were literally, I had, I had written them in, I think Scott, Scott, what's his name? Yes, provided the numbers. And so, like, pre-K would be eighteen students as opposed to state-rated capacity, which is twenty. Kindergarten was eighteen, state-rated capacity was twenty-two. First grade and up was twenty-one students, instead of the twenty-three, twenty-three students for per state-rated capacity. So if our goal is to hit, you know, is, is to get schools at ninety percent state-rated capacity, then that means we are already exceeding the sizes that, you know, are best practices for our Title One schools. I did look, and there is no specific limit for the state of Maryland, they don't cap it for Title One, but all the documentation basically says is that schools that receive Title One money, typically, the first thing they do is to buy more teacher, you know, is to use that money to, to get more teachers so they can reduce class size, because they know that is one of the number one factors that increases student success, which makes sense, so there isn't a state number for that, but we are using state-rated capacity numbers to determine what the utilization rate of the building is.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any, anything from the NAACP meeting, or anything that you've heard from within the community? That you want to share? I feel like the Edgewater folks have been really, really loud, but the.
I mean, I do want to, I do want to share the point that I raised at the Annapolis Middle School redistricting meeting held by AACPS, when we were given a chance to talk at the end of the meeting. I brought up the point from the prior redistricting when the then principal walked me around the school and said, yes, you know, we have an alleged state-rated capacity of, for AMS of this much higher number, but we cannot feed students in the choke point is our cafeteria. And so we cannot feed the number of students that they claim could fit in classrooms because of the inability of the cafeteria, and that was demonstrated a number of times when Annapolis Middle was used as a swing location during reconstruction of certain elementary schools. And I think we should add that, that concern and question into this document saying it's, it might not be appropriate, you know, to bounce people to Annapolis Middle and then bounce them to, to South River. If you are still needing facilities within Annapolis Middle to provide construction relief timing, and you have the choke point of the cafeteria, that we cannot arrange students to be fed in a timely and appropriate time for their learning.
Right.
When we had those other elementary squished into Annapolis Middle, kids were having lunch at like ten oh five AM. And, you know, and then going four or five hours with no food.
Kind of like how the four lunch periods are working at high school now. If you're in the sweet spot in the middle two lunches, you're fine. All right. So do we, all right.
Did Grace get back on, because she was at the meeting?
Oh, yeah, Grace, I see Grace's name, she popped up.
Yeah, ask her about the meeting.
Grace? Are you online, Grace? I see her name at the bottom of this. Oh, Grace? Yes. Grace?
I don't know what's wrong with her. Maybe something is wrong with her line.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It seems as though the parents that were there were very upset and angry over the fact that their kids had to be bused like that. In the event something happened, they would have to have some means of transportation of getting there, getting their kids back. There was a lot of dissatisfaction that took place. In the final analysis, the superintendent stated that he would look in it and then it, nothing had been finalized. I'm hoping that he was listening and went back to the drawing board to see what other alternative that they could come up with. But the parents were very, very upset.
Grace, can you tell me what parents you're talking about, parents from what school?
Mills parole.
The parents, yeah. There, there's the, what kids are going the kids that were going to be bused, where are they going to be bused from?
From, from Edgewater.
No.
They're going to Edgewater, right?
Because the kids from Mills parole will not be bused anywhere, it's the kids from Edgewater.
The kids from Mills parole will be bused to South River High School. Yeah.
Oh, we're talking.
Okay.
You're talking about later, much later, is that?
For their high school career, yes, yeah.
Okay, so Grace, these were parents not of, of not the parents of Edgewater that were there, they were the parents of Mills parole?
Yeah. Predominantly, yes.
Was the superintendent in attendance at this meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Oh, yes, he was saying, he was listening, they were, they were, and they were saying that you need to come into the community. And there was also the statement made that as far as trust was concerned.
Trust?
Those parents, trust. They don't always trust what the board said. So that was, that was stated as well.
Okay.
And, and then the lady went to say that a lot of people, you need to go into the community, because they're not going to come out. But if you go in there and talk to them. But there were, there were a lot of folks in there, they were, they were, they were not very happy at all. And of course, you had your school board, they were there, and they were listening as well.
Okay.
So as far from what I gathered, superintendent stated that the final decision has not been made.
Right. Right.
And I think that they were taking into consideration what the parents were saying at this meeting.
It was well-attended, it was well-attended.
Good.
You had delegates there, Shanika Hansen parents, it was well-attended.
Oh, yeah. It was well-attended.
At the prior meeting at Annapolis Middle School, I made the point to the COO, I forgot his name, but the gentleman who was running the meeting, that they should consider, because of the impact of going down to South River High School from our Mills parole community without public transportation, that they should then instead consider what about taking the Rolling Knolls portion of the Annapolis cluster who has more transportation, personal transportation, and using them as the ones to go down to South River High School and, and have that transition. So I think that should be looked at and considered.
Well, it should be.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know how they will feel about that, I mean, it's easy for us to.
No, but nobody's going to like, but nobody is going to like.
Let me finish, please. Like, but I think that those parents and students may also have a feeling about that, so I would be wary of taking a community and saying, oh, it's best for them to go rather than this community. Also, in this, in this expression that we have, it says farms family frequently lack access to private transportation, and that moving farm students away from their homes moves opportunities, but we, we all, I mean, at every meeting, we discuss about the transportation problem of them even getting to Annapolis High School. So it, it's the same, you know, same thing.
True, but at least I will say this, at least, at least in the community here, like, we've seen, like, from my daughter doing sports now, that there's a lot more opportunities to carpool and things when you're within the same community. Whereas if you're going down to South River, you're talking about a relatively smaller number of kids that are coming from Annapolis to go down there, so there are going to be less opportunities for those kids to participate in things like sports, because they're not going to have as ready access with, you know, to be able to get a ride with somebody.
Yeah, so only those kids that are going down there would, would have the ability to carpool together, I understand that, but at least a group from a certain community that would be going. So what do we, what is Fish talking about in his statement asking about this? Could you move that up a little bit, Laura?
Sure.
Where it talks about the
Seats for Success and.
Yeah, I want to see this, what, what is he?
Well, the question, the argument, the other concern, I guess, that we have is that moving students down there will reduce access to programs like Seats for Success, Charting Careers, Boys and Girls Clubs. And then we've already seen that we can't even get kids, what was the?
I'm sorry, I am just not here today. Laura, can I answer his question? From, from last year's situation, Charting Careers was doing things within Annapolis High. They were, they were having meetings during a Panther Hour within Annapolis High with that cohort of kids they were mentoring in Annapolis High location, and, and much of the, you know, conflict resolution and other things happens within Annapolis High, the, the No Harm Program came in and conducted things within Annapolis High, and the social worker would pull kids from class and arrange for, for the programs to be doing it at Annapolis High with their students, so. Things do happen within the high school itself, not all of the programming.
So basically Fish was asking, saying that Seats for Success, that portion still happens in the community, but there may be other programs that happen at the school.
Well, Charting Careers does, I don't know about the Seats for Success.
Yeah.
So at this point, we're all supposed to vote whether we want this statement sent to the Board of Education.
Right.
This, and this statement is a series of questions.
Yeah. And, and we're sort of still trying to formulate and make sure this isn't a finished document, these were sort of like the ideas. I was sort of taking stuff that I had gotten from our meetings and trying to put it into a document form, and then Jess added, and I know Fish put some comments and things in there as well. So we are still, this is. So we are still, this is something I was hoping that we could flesh it out sort of as a group tonight, um, before, rather than just a yes or no vote. You know, if there's pieces that you agree, if there's information that you think needs to be either clarified or added, that's what I would hope, I would hope that we could as a, as a group do this. Um. I feel like, I do think it is important for us to, um, to put out some for, some form, to, for us to weigh in as a commission. I mean, this is sort of our purpose is to sort of bridge between the city and the school system. And I do think an official statement would have a little bit more power than each of us sending our comments individually.
Yeah. I agree.
So I think that was the conversation we had last month and then decided that we really wanted to have a second meeting, you know, a meeting, to have this meeting for this express purpose. So do we want to go down through the document and then we can add or change as we go through it?
Sure.
All right. All right, um, so the first thing is, is, has to do with the fact that, and I, this was one of the points that Joanna brought up. Uh, she asked the question of them when they very, when they first presented the second phase. Um, the name of the firm escapes me now, but, um, the question that Joanna, that Dr. Tobin asked them was, um, had, did they take any farms, uh, or Title One status into account? And the organization that, the, the contractors that we had hired for this said, no, they did not. They weren't, they were not asked to do that, um, which I think right off the bat, again, changes a lot of this information. Um, these conversations that we're having would be very different if, um, all of these schools were located in Severna Park, for example. Um, so I think that that, I, I think from what my takeaway from that was that it was important that we, um, that, that they take that into account. So that's what this first piece is, is that the most scenarios do not take into account the Title One status or farms and ELD numbers for the schools and communities affected by the fa- by this phase. Um. First, we talk about the class size. Uh, Title One schools traditionally aim for a smaller class size than the state rated capacity SRC numbers provide for. Thus, a Title One school with greater than eighty percent SRC capacity would be overcrowded by Title One standards. Mills Perole Elementary School is a Title One school with a high percentage of farms. I think they are the highest in our cluster, correct? Um, um, a high percentage of farm students. Currently at seventy-nine percent capacity, all three scenarios will increase Mills Perole to eighty-nine percent capacity, which will preclude the num- the smaller class sizes that will give its Title Ones, Title One population the best chance of future success. So second was to deal with trans- the second point was to deal with transportation. Um, farms families frequently lack access to private transportation. Moving farms students further away from their homes and in areas without public transportation essentially removes opportunities for students to participate in sports or other extracurricular activities, as well as preventing families from participating in school activities such as parent teacher conferences, performances, and sports events. Then we talked about the, these, uh, programs, um, like Seats for Success. Farms students in the Annapolis cluster, and I was actually, okay, uh.
We need to adjust that a little bit.
Yeah, Jess said to remove stars. So students in the Annapolis cluster often participate in programs that offer mentorship and other educational supports, such as the Boys and Girls Club, Seats for Success, Charting Careers, et cetera. Um, and then moving students to South River High School will cut off student access to these necessary programs.
We need to actually designate which program will put not will cut off or may cut.
Yeah.
Will reduce.
Will reduce access.
Can I ask a question? I'm still a little bit confused. If Mills Perole is at seventy-nine percent capacity,
Mm-hmm.
what's the purpose of tr- of redistricting? I mean, why can't they just stay at that, uh?
That's excellent question, Odessa. I think the reasoning is, is because Annapolis Middle School on paper is very empty. So they try, they have to do something with Annapolis Middle School. And so the idea is to move these kids up to Mills Perole so that they can go to Annapolis Middle, which will make Annapolis, because Annapolis Middle School is a very large building um, that is ostent- a- again, on paper, very empty. In reality, we know the stu- the Office of School Performance is there. They have used it i- in the past for, um, for elementary schools. Um, frankly, one of the things that we have talked about in the past was the need for more pre-K seats. Um, and in particular, a- again, our farms communities get the first, first choice of, of, uh, spaces in pre-K. So if we don't have enough space, like that means that for like a school like Mills Perole, every kid that's going to need a seat in kindergarten should also have a seat in pre-K because, you know, a- a- and if there, if there are, if you know, if you're a farm student, then you should have, you are basically guaranteed a seat, or at least you should be if the seats are available. So I don't know that we currently have that capacity at Mills Perole or at, at our other, you know, I know what, elsewhere within our cluster. So that's another thing. I, to me, the logical thing would be to use some of that space at Annapolis Middle to provide some pre-K space, but nobody asked me.
Well, that's a basically, they have to look at the whole area.
Yeah.
You know, they're not looking at specific schools except for the schools that they figure have space and the schools they figure are overcrowded. So they have to look at, I mean, and they have to do that. I mean.
Yeah, we were told every time that we've done redistricting in the past, the first thing they have said is that i- that, that the state looks at the capacities and if they see that we have one school that's really overcapacity next to a school that's, that's very low, you know, low utilization rate, they're not going to give us construction money for the overcrowded school because they're like, you could just move some of these students over here. So the school system has to make a, a good faith effort to do that in order to unlock some of those state funds, which makes sense. Um, so, um, you know, they, they need to at least, you know, put in, put some effort towards doing that, which makes sense.
Yes. I mean, it's a necessity. I mean, nobody, I don't think anybody wants to do it. I certainly, I, I know they don't like doing it because it takes a lot for them. But let's get back to this statement here. I still don't think that's, um, actually the way, it, because it won't reduce the Seats for Success. So how do we make that correct?
But we, we do know that we've already had issues of with students being able to attend. What was the, the program at the, um, Pitt Moir? Because of transportation, we couldn't get kids from Bates over to the Pitt Moir. I am blanking right now on the name of the program, but I mean.
Access to some of these necessary programs.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I said, I think reduce access. And as Janet makes a good point, that some of these programs like Charting Careers and things do come in. I know the other day when I was over at, um, Annapolis High for, um, I was dropping off some stuff for teacher appreciation, there was a whole group of folks coming into the building for something with, um, uh, Charting Careers. So that was happening in the building. If those students, even if they participate in Charting Careers, if they are not in the building where that activity is, is happening, they're not going to get to participate. And I don't know that a lot of these groups have the bandwidth to run a second, you know, to, to be able to say, okay, we're going to run an event at Annapolis High and then we're going to pack everything up and go down and run the same event at South River. I mean, for smaller or, and for smaller organizations, that means that you're putting more of your money into that sort of logistics instead of into other things. So that's a choice that these individual groups would have to make. Um. So I do think it will, it will, and it, it will limit access in some ways. For example, if they do have to support kids at both schools, maybe they don't have money to support as many students because they've got to divide their resources in half now and, and support kids at two different high schools. So in some ways, even if it, even if they are physically able to access it, they may, there may just be fewer resources available. All right, so then, and then also, okay, here's the, the pre-K. Fi- Farms families have a higher priority for pre-K program, actually I should say pre-program, pre, pre-K program seats. Um, as farm students have a much greater need for these programs and are the first tier to be considered. I don't even know if we need to see this. Uh, they just have a prior priority for pre-K seats. Do these seat plans include seats equal to the number of students who will qualify for them? Oh, okay. I would say do these. Maybe these, do these numbers or do these, um, scenarios, because they're talking about the three different scenarios. Do we need all of this or should I just cut this part?
I would keep it in. I wouldn't necessarily cut it.
Okay.
Higher priority.
All right. So that was one of the questions was this, yeah, this, there was, the sentence was cut off there before. Um. Because I do think that's a legitimate, especially, I mean, I know we don't know what's going to happen with the blueprint now because, you know, Title One might be going away. Who the heck knows? Um, if we get rid of the Department of Education, but for right now, the pri- one of the, one of the platforms for, one of the pillars from, um, the blueprint was to have a pre-K, universal pre-K. Um, and I don't know, there was a lot of discussion about how can we do that when I, we don't have seats in our schools? Um, and so there was some, you know, public and private partnership ideas, which have not always, I have, I have not heard a great success from those because like a lot of like, for example, the religious schools don't want to not teach religious education as part of the program, so they don't want to jump through the hoops to participate. Um. So I don't know how well that's going to begin with, but I will say like, you know, uh, well, uh, of families that are liable, likely to be able to pull kids and put them in private pre-K programs, um, more likely to happen in non-Title One and non, or you know, non-Title One schools with lower numbers of farm students. So I think we need to, um, I think asking for pre-K seats for that is legitimate concern. So that's what, that was all, everything to do with farms. Is there anything else with regard to that that anybody has thoughts and want to add or contribute or?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I'm thinking that of all of the elementary schools that we have in the Annapolis area, they're all are at capacity.
Almost. Have different levels.
Yes. Okay. I'm saying we can't shift kids to some of the other elementary schools within the area.
The, the choke point is Annapolis High. Annapolis High is overcrowded and heading toward more overcrowding. So.
Okay, well.
It's, it's not.
I can understand that. If I remember correctly, uh, Jess said something about we have three programs at Annapolis High School.
Mm-hmm.
Three programs where as kids are bused to Annapolis. Why is it that Annapolis must have all three of those?
Because all of the magnet, because all of the magnet programs require parents to provide transportation to consolidated bus stops. So if you want a kid to participate in an IB program, a parent has to be able to drive you to either, you know, either it's in your homeschool, which is a benefit to and that the Annapolis community because it means we have IB classes in the building so that our kids can take their regular buses. But like for, like, when my daughter did the Bates, uh, program, I had to be, I had to drive her to the library where she would pick up a bus to take her to the, um, the magnet program because there is, she couldn't pick up a bus in our neighborhood to go there. So if we move IB programs, if we move the Apex program um, out of, or the, I guess, the other one is, um, NJROTC. If they move those to other schools, it means that our kids have, again, the same kids that, that are, are not going to have access to programs down at South River would also wo- would not have as easy access to those.
But I understand what you're saying, but you're knocking kids out who live in the immediate area and you're busing them elsewhere. You're bringing someone else in.
We're not busing any, we're not busing people out of the area. I mean, i- i- now, we are not.
Okay, not now.
Mm-hmm.
But if this, if, if Annapolis is overcrowded.
Yeah.
And it's due to the fact of the programs that we offer, correct?
Mm-hmm. That's not the bar, like, the programs we offer are smaller proportions. The overcrowding is from population growth in the area of just kids in our district.
Going to continue to grow.
Right.
Continue to grow.
Yeah, so, so, uh, the IB program is not that big. Um, the, the ROTC program is not that big. Um.
And we, like, the, the Apex program is split. We have kids from our cluster who get bussed up to Broadneck for all of the instrumental and vocal performance aspects of the Apex program. The only thing we have at, at Annapolis High is we have drama and drama, visual arts, and dance.
Right. Laura, isn't it only like, is it like sixty-five students?
Yeah, it's a small number.
Very small number, and our kids in the Annapolis cluster benefit from having that at their homeschool.
Yeah, by having IB at the school. Remember, IB is a whole school uh, program, which means that all of the students who attend Annapolis High uh, ta- take IB classes for their first like two or three years. They may not necessarily go for the IB diploma, but they get the, the additional rigor that the IB program brings to it because all the students in the school are taking IB classes as freshmen and sophomores. Like all of our science and history and, and, and whatnot, all of that is IB. So that's, those are additional opportunities that are, that students within the Annapolis cluster would lose if that program was moved someplace else.
And it would not reduce numbers within the building by anything significant.
Now, I remember years ago, we actually got all the numbers of kids in and kids out and it's, it was the number of kids that are, because we had, we do have kids that leave, leave the Annapolis cluster to go to South River for, um, STEM or to Glen Burnie for, um, EMA program, the Biomedical Allied Health Program, or to Broadneck for Apex, uh, for the other half, the other half of Apex. And so when you looked at the difference between kids being bused in and kids being bused out, it was very small. I think it was like maybe, I want to say fifty kids um, was the difference. If that's, I don't know, I don't know if you remember Janet, but it was, it was not, it was not a lot of kids.
Right.
Um, in the overall, it's not like we're bringing in, you know, seven hundred kids for these programs. We're, we're, we're sort of treating kids, you know, a little bit here and there.
And we're servicing our own. Programs.
That goes back to what Jess says, maybe that we need to look in building, uh, Annapolis. We, uh, adding to Annapolis, there are other schools in the county that had two schools built, Annapolis, that has not happened.
They will not fund. The county council has put forth a resolution last year saying they will not fund school construction um, with, when seats are available in existing schools. No one's going to come up with the money to, to increase Annapolis High when seats are available at existing schools. And that's why they're going through this painful process.
When they, um, count the number of students uh, attending the number of seats, are they including the portables?
Not in sta- state rated capacity does not include the portables.
So Jane, uh, can, uh, so what's the capacity of South River?
Let me bring up the, uh, redistricting map. I think we can look at it, um, that way.
Oops, what happened here? No, oops, sorry, I can't. All right, so.
Oops. We look at high school. South River High School. South River High School is currently at a seventy-five percent utilization. And under the three scenarios, it would go up to eighty-nine, eighty-eight, or ninety-three percent, depending on how many students they bring down. And basically, that difference was the size of the, the groups from Mills parole. So this is the, this over here, can you guys see the screen on your new screen?
Yeah, we can. Laura, can you also click on Rolling Knolls ES and see the size, what the pop, population is that?
Rolling, yeah, Rolling Knolls is at seventy-six. Oh, and that's gonna drop to the six, drop to sixty-three or seventy-eight, depending on the scenarios. So let's look at where those borders are. If we look at the elementary school borders right now, Mills parole, so these guys that are here in stripes would be added to the Mills parole area. And then these kids that are currently at Mills parole would be shifted to Germantown. Actually, I wanted to, hang on a second, if we take that off, yeah, those kids, yeah, this is everybody that's currently at Mills parole, or I'm sorry, these, these guys, this group here, this is the Gingerville area, these guys are currently coming down to Edgewater, so it's not really clear on the map that this group here is currently at Edgewater. So under scenario one, they would all go to Mills parole. And then, sorry, I have to move, gotta move zoom around on my screen. Under scenario two, um, pretty similar, actually, in terms of, I don't think the boundary changes.
Right, on the ES.
A whole lot for the elementary school. And then for scenario three, it's the same, these kids up here that were shifting to Germantown are instead being moved to Rolling Knolls. So I think that little, this little bundle here goes into Rolling Knolls.
Okay.
But do they take into consideration the academic performance and of, of these schools? I'm gonna be honest with you, I may be wrong for saying this, but if I live in Edgewater, I wouldn't want my child to be transferred to Mills parole. And that's just an honest opinion, you know, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, they can't improve, but what, what I'm hearing about the school is not all that good. So why would you want to put your child in a school that's, that's, that's underperforming?
They don't. The reason is basically this, the, the middle school, if you look at the existing middle school, this is all Annapolis Middle here in this area, and then these guys over here are Bates. So under scenario one, they gain this group of students for middle school. Let me click on Annapolis Middle. So under.
But, but my question is, what's the performance level of?
The performance level is based on the student coming in, you know, if, it's not, it's not an indictment of the school itself and the teachers at that school. Your, your kid is.
Well, I'm not talking about the teachers, but.
Well, performance related to the teacher.
Why is Mills parole a Title I school?
Because they have the highest number of students living in poverty.
Okay, and along with vehicles with.
And also, and also English language learners.
So, does, does English language learner also, Jen, does that also impact Title I? I thought Title I was purely based on farms.
It is, but I'm saying Mills parole, in addition to being a Title I school,
Yes.
has a very high percentage of English language learners, so, who are not going to score high immediately on a performance test. And you should be measuring is the growth of that student from the beginning test to the end test, not, you know, did they, did they outscore someone who, who had a higher start?
Right.
But, I don't know, Grace, by you being a guidance counselor for so many years, would you want your child to be, I mean, is the Edgewater School, Elementary School, a, a, a higher performing school than Mills parole?
But you, you have to remember, I was not elementary back there. We had Adams Park. We didn't have so many different program schools that you have today.
And that was the reason. And school is different than it was, you know, twenty.
Yeah, but, but I'm talking about in reality as a parent.
Forty, forty years ago, forty years ago, quite different.
Quite different. What, what's expected of the students, what the students are having to handle on their own, that, you know, the parent is kind of extrinsisly cut off from, it's a different scenario of what students are. If they can't get back and forth to class and be part of the school, how do they form the relationships that get them through the rest of life? You know, if you're not having tight bonds with teachers and other students at your high school, how do you use that, that support system for the rest of your life?
Right, okay, but what, what I'm saying is, if, if my school is like, I'm just putting it in a, what's the word? In other words, if, let's say, you know, the elementary school in Edgewater is an A, A school.
Sure.
But Mills parole may be, but Mills parole may be a C school. Why would you want to take your child, I'm, I'm not sure whether it is or not, but my, my daughter used to work in that Edgewater.
Odessa, I will say that it was, they were, the parents at Edgewater that spoke to us were very careful not to use that as a reason for, like, you know, their concerns were primarily to do with busing and, and, you know.
Well, I mean, that's the way they have to, I don't like, word it, but you know, I mean, in reality, I'm, you know, I'm a realist, you know.
Okay, how would, how would you feel to have your kids be the, be the only African-American kids in a overwhelming sea of, of white kids at, you know, would you think that they would be welcomed and supported and it to the.
Well, you know, for years, for, for years, that, no, right. Okay, but you know, for years, I have advocated for a charter school in this area for African-American males, which never took off, because I never had anybody that wanted to come out and support that idea. Because times have changed, like you said, things have changed. And we're living in cultures now that's so different from the, I went to a segregated schools, all my schools were segregated. So, I mean, it's not that way now. It's not that way now. So we have to realize that teaching some of these kids coming from homes, impoverished homes, or, you know, or whatever, the, the problems that's going on, we gotta kind of like twerk the system a little bit, twerk the curriculums and things. So to me, instead of transferring kids, redistricting kids, why not fix the schools? Why not fix the problems that we're having with our kids in the schools?
But those are two completely separate issues. Yes, both need to be handled, but you have to, you have to have the, the balance of appropriate number of seats for students and for buildings that are not full and empty buildings that are overfull. Yeah, I understand what you're saying. What tonight is about, is, is about talking about how do we best express the concerns, suggest things that they should be looking into. So I'm, I'm suggesting they should look into, if they've looked into Mills parole, I mean, the consultant from out of town just picked that one to, to do a scenario of. We could say other scenarios should be run. And the scenario of moving people who have transportation down to South River should be run.
But did I hear some comments, or did I misread, you know, read some comments that the superintendent was saying how segregated Anaronda County is, that, that, was that?
It is highly segregated and, but Annapolis High is one of the few places where there is not one dominant, you know, ethnicity in the school, that it's.
Okay, but, but who's in the IB programs though? What, what race or national, you know, what, what genders or whatever in the, the better programs, in the IB programs?
Yeah, I use. Not necessarily a better program. If you ask Laura, whose son did not take IB and took AP classes instead, it's, it's not necessarily, and my kids did take IB, it's not necessarily a better program, like.
But it does give us, it does give us the IB for everybody at, you know, like Annapolis Middle is all school IB, so all the kids who go to Annapolis Middle are IB, whether you get bused there or not, you still get the IB education. And Annapolis High is the same way for at least freshman and sophomore year, because all of the, the, all of your core classes, your math and your language arts and things are all IB up to, what, I don't know, Janet, does it junior, junior year is at the IB, or they, I mean, I think it takes specific.
Yeah, it's only, it's only first, diploma thing starts in junior year, so the whole thing goes through sophomore year.
Alright, but let's be, you know, like I said, let's be real now, most of our kids, the African-American kids, because I had three kids came out of Annapolis High, and I saw the racism there. Now, most of those kids can't even get into VOTech, because they have to have a certain grade point average in middle school in order to get into the VOTech programs.
And also not enough seats in VOTech. There's not enough seats in VOTech, yes, that's.
Well, it's not fair that our, that our kids, our, our African-American kids are not able to get into those programs because of those reasons.
Odessa, we have, our, our CAT South program, I think there were what, five high schools, five or six high schools that flow into CAT South? CAT South has like, what, two hundred?
Two hundred and fifty seats or something?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty seats. There are five high schools worth of kids that compete for a hundred and, or for two hundred and fifty seats. I mean, just, just the math alone. There are two thousand kids at Annapolis High, and then you're adding four other high schools to that, competing for two hundred and fifty seats. It's ridiculous. There is no way, I mean, the CAT programs are phenomenal. I love CAT. I mean, I think it's, it's, we're, we're so, you know, it's, it's a great thing, but there is no way, each high school ought to have its own CAT program, let alone having kids from, you know, that many schools feed into it. There are not enough seats to, to benefit the number of students. But back.
Say something about that.
Sure.
As a guidance counselor, and because many cannot get into the programs, because at CAT North or CAT South, they become a, a behavior problem, because we're not meeting their needs. Because when I grew up, all of that was in the high school. Each high school had its own. And if, to be honest with you, we need to build two more of those, because kids are not going to college as much as they used to, because you're making more money as an electrician or plumber or builder.
Yep.
And if that's my, if that's what I want, why can't the school offer it? Why can't the school offer what I want? And I will not be a behavior problem in something that I love.
Yes.
But we don't seem to get that.
We had talked about this two years ago, and we were supposed to be advocating, because there's a North CAT, there's a South CAT. Why can't middle Anaronda County have a CAT? Because just like Grace said, home economics, wood, wood shop, all that stuff, that stuff was taught in high school.
Yeah.
Right now, we really, it is quarter after, so we really need to get back, but maybe in another meeting, Grace, you and I can make a proposal that we do something to urge them to, to do that, because I, I strongly.
It's not the school.
I think that's great. The other point we can make for that too, Enid, is that they did build that huge workforce development center up at the community college, which does offer a lot of the same programs that our CAT programs do. They've got welding, they've got automotive maintenance, they've got cosmetology. So they've got like, I think, so why aren't we doing, why aren't we also trying to get, we know that the kids, like, we, you know, can, can do the dual enrollment for free, but again, transportation. We could bus kids, if we can bus kids down to CAT, why can't we bus kids, why can't we push to bus kids up to the community college? So they can get and take advantage of those seats, which would alleviate some of the, you know, the demand that CAT can't meet.
I agree, and we, we could, we really need to work on.
Okay, I think that's, I think that is a valid high priority that we ought to be. And that is something that the blueprint was supposed to be supporting. The blueprint said that one of the other pillars of blueprint, in addition to pre-K, was more job training, more vocation training. And so that is something that they are supposed to be, you know, having more money, or spending more money on. So what does that look like? And how do we get that in Anaronda County, specifically, how do we get that in, in our cluster? Laura, could you make?
I just wanted to just jump in and say, and the other thing is, we have so many students, especially their senior year, who are only taking partial schedules, that could then take advantage of that and be still in school, rather than just being out of school for, like, there's so many students who are only in school on A days, who only go to school for two hours and, you know, for two classes and then are off. So that would be another opportunity for those students to be able to sort of bolster their education before they get out in the real world.
Absolutely.
Can I add the point that, that in these comments, we could add, yes, Annapolis Middle, you know, has space and seating and would probably be a great location for an additional CAT program within the building. Then our students could access off bus lines and, and walking radius and other things more accessibly. And, and even it could help with overcrowding within Annapolis High School if a portion of our students are peeled and going to there.
Yeah, what if we pick students from Annap, from, that are coming out of our middle schools? I know we had talked about maybe doing a gap year at one point for kids going into middle school, but what if we had a targeted program for students that we, that, you know, to do partial day at Annapolis Middle in that facility for additional extra help or additional supports, or also job training, something like that, so that we could bring, make sure that the kids in our cluster who need more support are getting it.
But I'm jumping in obviously late on this. But I don't, I just wanna, I, I, I really would like to see the results of the not MGT study, the new facility study, before we talk about putting anything in Annapolis Middle, because I'm not really sure how much space Annapolis Middle does have. I mean, I spend a lot of time in Annapolis Middle, and I do not see how it has the vast amounts, I mean, according to the number that they have, Annapolis Middle is fifty percent.
Right, yeah, I know.
Laura, can you put the other, the comments with the thing, so we can finish the last two sessions?
Right, I was gonna say the same thing about Georgetown East. I know they always say that Georgetown East is so, is so, is so underutilized, but there is not an empty room at Georgetown East, even though it says it's anticipated utilization or its current utilization is fifty-nine percent. We have our ECI program that's housed in there, that takes up, and, and those classes are tiny, and takes up almost like the whole sort of front left corner of the school. And again, as we see in all of our Title I schools, kids that are, you know, in our, when we have our farms populations, we have much higher need for reading interventionists, math interventionists, and those people need places to work. And that's, that's another thing that none of these sort of take into account. And maybe we should add something like that, 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 you know, students in these schools, I know Georgetown East, there was, there were several rooms for reading intervention and math intervention. There were, the, the Children's Guild had, had, had two classrooms that they used for, for social and emotional support. So even though the building says it's fifty-nine percent utilized, you know, all of these, remember, I just, I still remember the, all the trailers outside of Tyler Heights, where they had seven ESOL teachers that were all out in, in trailers, because they didn't have space inside the building. But higher, our higher need students have a greater need for additional services, and those services have to happen somewhere.
That's a great point, Laura, and if we can add that, that it would be a detriment to the students of Mills parole if we're increasing enrollment in Mills parole and taking away those, those building facilities within Mills parole for intervention.
Um, what, what is, I'm looking for, students in, I don't want to say like, higher, higher risk? What's the word I'm looking for? Just students that need additional services.
Just say students that need additional services.
Alright.
Yeah, I think we should get away from. Yeah, I think we should get away from using, from focusing on terms like farms or ELD, you know, we can use them in some places. But in general, I just think we just say students that need additional services. I don't think we wanna box anyone.
How about, how about schools with, um, large populations of students? Who need additional services. And then I will put in, um, um, English language. It's ELL.
ELD, it's ELD now.
ELD, okay, sorry. ELD, um, um, reading, math intervention. Behavioral, behavioral, social, emotional supports, et cetera. Needs based. For students.
While you're writing that out, just talking about the space at the different schools, I just was at, the reason I was not on in the beginning was because I was at the middle school, the Annapolis Middle School concert. And there are five, it was the band concert and there are five band classes. And, you know, we barely fit the band and all the parents that were there in the room that is, you know, that is there for that. If, if, you know, it's possible, just like with Annapolis High School, but also with Annapolis Middle, that when they do that study, they're gonna look and they're gonna say, you know, the, the stage performance space or the cafeteria space that is currently exist isn't, isn't enough for the population as it is, it needs to be reworked, right? So that's, I was just thinking about that.
Laura, when you just put require space for these, um, um, additional programs.
Okay, so required space. Need additional services.
Yeah, but.
All of which require additional space.
Enid, are you just saying not point out any specific services? Just say?
No, no, I know, I like, I like, cause yeah, no, I think it's fine.
Okay, um, I, I would say actually, um.
No, wait a minute, something's missing.
Yeah, I would say something like, um, our, I'm, I'm focusing on Title One because that I think was the, the most important piece that they just ignored. Our Title One scores, Title One schools, have large populations of students who need additional, who need additional services, ELD, math, reading methods, all of which require additional space. Filling schools. To, um, capacity. Means those services. Um, like, I'm just thinking about all the number of hallways that we saw at Germantown, at Mills parole, um, and at, um, at Georgetown East where there means these services are taking place in the hallways and stairwells.
In violation of privacy.
Yeah, exactly.
That's where they take place at Eastport also.
Means these services, you know, no dedicated space. And hallways. Sorry.
There's definitely a tendency in our school system to put those services in the hallways when needed. And that's not fair to the students or the teachers.
In violation of all, what is, what did you say, Janet, in violation of, of student privacy?
Right. Like if you have a school that doesn't have a big enough population to have an in-person Alps and they do online Alps, then the online Alps takes place in the hallway at a computer, like just in the hallway while everyone else in the school walks past. Which is hard for focusing.
Yeah, I would say violation of student and.
This but. This is gonna go on. It's the longest.
No. Do you want me to delete it? I don't, I don't know. My brain is not functioning.
It just, in violation of student privacy, period.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So we were down on D, I think, when we.
Yeah. Okay. So we were talking about the, the programs that reduce student access to these necessary programs. And then we talked about farms. Okay. Did we have anything else that we wanted to add under D or E?
I just wanted to know, um, where she got that it will double the number of units. Is that true? Because I thought it was gonna be mixed. Jess, did you put that in there?
Sorry, ask again. I mean, tell me again what that was.
Well, number two, where it says that the planned development for Eastport Terrace and Harbor House will essentially double the number of units. I thought it was gonna be mixed, not so much as double.
It's going to double the number of units in Eastport plus an additional 100 units either in Eastport or elsewhere.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was not a guess.
No, it's 350, it's gonna replace the 357 units that are there, that are here. And then for a toll, and then a total of 722. So it's replacing the 357 and then, or it's adding, and then adding an additional 365. And that will either be doubled within Eastport, sorry, it'll either be 365 within Eastport or it'll be 265 in Eastport and a hundred elsewhere in the Annapolis community, which could still be in Eastport. It may not just be at Eastport Terrace and Harbor House, right? They could say, well, you have to, I don't know, whatever. There's lots of different places. So.
And the, and, and what about the area where the shopping center is where they were gonna do some re?
Right. So that's what I was, that's where I was going because they could say, well, we're gonna make you do 100 affordable housing units in there if you wanna redevelop. So then that'll be from that. And, and I don't wanna, we don't need to write that out in here. That is actually one of the, when we get the numbers and hopefully we'll get the numbers, the, the number of kids that come from Watergate now compared to the number of kids that came from Watergate in 2015 is also, is probably doubled. Like we did not have nearly as many Watergate students in 2015 when the last MGT study was done and when the last redistricting was done as we do now. We have, I, I would say it's almost doubled.
Yeah. So you don't wanna go into anymore. So.
No.
Okay. I didn't think so either. Okay. So just.
So you could use that number, the planned redevelopment of Eastport Terrace, Laura, you could.
Yeah, I was thinking rather than, rather than using the numbers, because then we have to say where the numbers came from. I was thinking we could just say the standards are, are much lower than the current gener, than, than, uh, than, than, um, currently generated.
No, I think you could say, like after Eastport CNI, I think you could say adding 365 units to Eastport and the surrounding community. I think you could say that. So that they understand that it's not like 10, right? It's 365 units.
But I think that Jess, I think it's more effective by you saying double the number because people won't know.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, that's fine.
I like, I like, yeah, I think that's pretty effective.
The actual, that, that's lower than the actual ratio gen, generated by the current population.
You could just say the standard student generation ratio, because the city uses the county's number.
Standard student generation.
Not standard twice.
Oops, sorry. Standard, 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 very standard, highly standard. The standard student generation ratio is much lower. Uh, the standard generation ratio, do we wanna say used by this, used by AACPS or used by?
Um. Hold on, I, I thought I just screenshot that for you the other day. Hold on. Um. One sec. Yeah, you could just say used by, I don't even know if you need to say used, the sta, well, yes, used by AACPS. That's fine. But we use. The wording for the schools program within the school system is. Um. I'm trying to find. It's the school pupil generation factors yield per unit.
All right, you're gonna have to say that slower.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you a text message.
Okay, all right, all right, okay.
Laura, could you, um, scan up a little bit so I can read the next one while she's looking at it?
Sorry.
Uh, and that's the end, right? Okay. And all that information in number three is what Jess got from, she knows that, right? That all came from report, right? So.
Yes. Okay, school pupil generation field per unit. All right. Hang on one second. Let me grab that, Jess. Are there more of the? Whoops. The. Whoops. School pupil generation factors yield per unit, um. Much lower than the actual student population generated. Maybe which will further skew the numbers or something? Janet, your hand is up. Did you have something else you wanted to?
No, um, just, just putting in the suggestion of, of using Annapolis Middle School space for, for, um, technical training.
Oh, yeah, that is a good idea.
Rear and technical training.
Okay.
Space considered, you know, consider the possibility of.
Much of these. Uh, I would say these.
Um, I was just muted for like 13 times, thinking I was unmuted. I would say which would further overcrowd the schools or further.
Oh, yeah, which will further.
Impact the school, right? Impact something rather, like so that we're like talking about the actual impact.
School utilization. Yes, no?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just. My point about Annapolis High School, um, decreasing populations that overcrowded Annapolis High School could be, uh, achieved with technical training at other locations.
Okay, Annapolis High School, Annapolis. All right, High School and increase utilization of Annapolis Middle School. Um, um, what about given a blueprint? Print, um. Um, that's what I'm looking for. Given the sizes.
Do you really wanna put that in there? Why don't we just make that point about the need and not, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that's, yeah.
Okay. What do you think of that? A large factor that seems to be driving these scenarios is the need to decrease the population at Annapolis High School and increase utilization of Annapolis Middle School. Given that the blueprint emphasizes the need for additional vocational training for students. And given that our CATS, CAT South program, it only accommodated a tiny fraction of the students who apply, perhaps space at AMS could be reallocated to meet these needs. I like that. I think that's a brilliant plan, honestly. I don't know. I hope we get credit for it if they do it because I, I think that would solve a lot of the issues that we, you know, that we talk about on a, you know, every month here.
Yeah.
Is everybody good with everything?
Yeah, and then this is the last.
Yeah, I'm good.
Recognizes the need to address overcrowding at Annapolis High School, address capacity elsewhere, and we hope that these factors above will be taken into account as AACPS considers how best to redistrict the Annapolis and surrounding clusters in a way that puts the students and their access to education in the forefront. Even if that requires a pause in the process until accurate and timely information can be utilized. It is better to do this correctly than to do it quickly. I like your addition, Jess. I think that's good. All right. Does anybody else have any, anything else that we are missing that we, we want, that we wanna change? Any type, very, any egregious typos that my eyes are not picking up that you guys are?
I think it's great. And thank you people for the effort, for putting it to paper. We appreciate it. Thank you for all who went to the two meetings and, and reported back what families are saying and et cetera.
All right. Can you either leave that bottom part in there, Laura, or email it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, let's break this out and put this in a different document because I do think we're gonna have, as we go through this, this is, you know, obviously gonna be a long process. I think these are other questions, um, that we should be sending out and getting answers for. I don't necessarily know that we need to attach them to this. I think just for this phase, we wanna say these are our, this is our feedback on the scenarios that you presented. But I think we wanna keep this stuff and use it, um, going forwards. So let me do this. I'm actually going to cut that and then. Meeting and then under here, I'm actually just gonna, that was under motions, but I'll put on, um. We just. No, no. All right. So we will save those. We will not, we will send those separately, uh, or, you know, flesh them out and ask them at some point, but all right. Any other questions, concerns, changes, typos? Feel like there's always one more typo.
Yeah, you, we authorize, you can revise any typos as needed.
Bold of you to assume that my eyes will see them later if they're not seeing them now. Bold of you to assume that my eyes will see them later, if they're not seeing them now.
Um, did you ever mention the, um, did you ever put in a paragraph about uh, examining a, a scenario with another elementary school that has more transportation?
No, um, I think we've made the point up here that, you know, these popu, that, they ought to be considering Title One schools as they're, as they're moving this, and I feel like that would sort of begs the point of look at the non-Titel One elementary schools and see.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can infer things here, I think you have to be explicit. And so when I brought that question up with Bob Moser or the COO, they said, you know, if you want that looked at, make sure you mention it in your comments.
All right. So what do you think we should add and where?
Um, I would say if, if an elementary population needs to be transferred to um, South River High School, then considerations such as transportation should include you running different additional scenarios of different elementary schools going. Um. I mean, Rolling Knolls is on the edge there.
Yeah, the discussion that we had talked about before, I think, was when Crofton was being built, was moving Rolling Knolls out to Crofton, but Crofton's at capacity, so um.
Right.
It made more, it made more sense, I think, to move them out that way, but um. Or just, I mean, honestly, I think, I, I think I, I would say leave the elementary school populations where they are um, and, and look at other, I mean, I really think what's driving that is not necessarily that they want to move an elementary school population, it's that they have these empty, supposed empty seats at Annapolis Middle. So I feel like it almost.
No, they're, the driving thing is also, like, they're still willing to keep a number of empty seats at Annapolis Middle because their scenarios are only moving that scenario slightly. The driving factor is reducing the population at Annapolis High.
Right.
So, you know, creating a district that needs to be considered for going to South River High School. I would say open up your considerations to other um, elementary districts to be sent to Annap, to South River High School.
Or take certain areas, you know, like maybe.
I'll say specifically of like, consider, consider the elementary district of Rolling Knolls um, as one scenario to move to South River High School. If they're considering the scenario of Mills Parole, also consider the scenario of Rolling Knolls, which is on the edge of. And.
Or a portion of Ro, Rolling Knolls. I mean, a portion of Rolling Knolls marks right up to Annapolis High School, so that gets into that whole same, you know, logistics inefficiency and taking kids that live right next to the high school and sending them elsewhere across a river. But there are certainly parts of Rolling Knolls that are closer to other high schools that might make more sense.
Well, somebody's going to go, somebody has to go across the river to South River.
But that, and that's the question, it does somebody have to go across the river to South River?
They do, they do, because we've emptied it out from building Crofton High School, so.
Well, no, Crofton High School's over capacity, so they're going to have to move some of those kids back, which is a whole fight that we're not, that's, we don't have, I don't, we don't have a horse in that race.
Right, but that's, but that's exactly the thing, right? There, there are other ways to, to, you know.
Well, it's still like, the, the driving factor is reducing the population at Annapolis High School, so what.
But then again, I mean, that's my, but that's my thing is, is it, is, it could be that the MGT, the not MGT, the new facility studies says, you know, what we recommend is taking those eight portables and non-relocatables, as they call them, um, and building a wing there that is the freshman wing or is the magnet wing or is, you know, exactly what we were talking about earlier, it could, you could have a CAT program along with, you know, IB and Apex in there, and, you know, there are a lot of possibilities, but until we see the results of that facility study, I mean, Annapolis High School hasn't had a renovation since two thousand and fifteen, according to the facilities plan that came out last summer. And in the year since two thousand and fifteen to today, and two thousand and fifteen was, you know, based on the two thousand and five facility study, there's been a lot of changes. So I think that until we really see the results of that study in September, I don't, I don't see how anyone would want to make any decisions about a school that's so clearly, you know, on the cusp of, of needing some sort of facility change regardless.
Well, th, they may or may not agree with you on that point, and I think we should offer up, if they choose to not agree with you on that point, I think we should offer up other scenarios that should be examined.
Laura, are you going to finish doing F? Because it's not complete and I don't want to make a mistake and then.
Yeah.
This now quarter up.
Okay. I, I, I think, I think Janet, I, I see your point, there are lots of things we could suggest. I, this was not really meant to be a suggestion of what they should do, it's basically just supposed to say, these are the things you should take into account, you should take into account Title One.
Right.
You should take into account farms, not what that looks like. They, I think if they say, okay, we have to look at Title One differently, we have to look at the schools differently, then the scenarios that they came up with are not good for those reasons, and then they will have to come up with other scenarios, whatever those other scenarios are. But I hesitate to, to say specifically, consider this or consider that. I think we did that a little bit with the use of Annapolis Middle, but I think that's a small enough um, disruption.
I, I think we should make explicit what we want examined.
Yes.
I think we've done that.
Okay, okay. Are these your changes that I'm seeing here, Jess? Who's?
I didn't make those.
Yeah, those are Tara. Tara, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready to vote on this?
Sure.
I think so. Do you have anything else to add, Tara? Thank you, those are good edits.
No, that was it.
All right, shall we put it to a vote?
Sure. All right. Let me bring up somewhere here, I have the roll call list. Okay, um. Let me see, Ward one is Fish, he is not here. Ward two is Jamie, she is not here. Ward three.
Yes.
Yes. All right, uh, Ward four.
Yes.
Um, India is not here, she, I think, sent in her proxy, let me double check. Yes, she submitted a proxy vote in support of the proposed statement, so she, Ward five is a yes. Uh, Ward six. That's Cory.
Yes.
All right, Ward seven is me, that is yes. Ward eight, Jess.
Yes.
All right, at large, Janet.
Yes.
At large, Cam.
Yes.
At large, Odessa.
Yes.
Um, Grace?
Yes.
All right. Well done.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate it, I appreciate you coming and giving up a second, a second evening out of your already too busy month for this, I think this was important, I'm glad that we got it done.
Thank you, Laura, thank you guys for, I'm sorry that I was late, could not miss the uh, Annapolis Middle Spring Concert. And I did want to give a shout out before we hang up, that Annapolis Middle won the Kindness Cup Award. I don't know if you all saw that, but it's really great and really proud. It's a great video, if you go onto YouTube, to the AACPS station, uh, station on YouTube, you can see the video. Um, it really represents the reality of what happening at Annapolis Middle School every day as opposed to the reputation that some people like to give to Annapolis Middle School. So congratulations to everyone at Annapolis Middle School and thanks to everyone who makes it such a great school every day.
Yay. All right. I make a motion to.
Night, everyone.
Good night. All right, so.